Good evening, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees Tuesday, April 11. Announce for call to order, please.
Mr. Kehlany?
Present.
Dr. Spencer Robinson here. Mr. Quadro is expected. Your C R is expected. Dr. Janelle Pearson Campbell in. Thank you.
I think we stand fair and plain, will you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great work of our citizens, one nation, on the ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
The next item is our mission statement. Smith Vocational High School prepares students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education for rigorous applied technical and academic programs. Is there any participation by the public this evening? Seeing none, participation by the trustees?
Yes, I want to share the printout of all the programs and services that the Collaborative for Educational Services provides to North Hampton and our sending communities. We have it in front of you for both Hampshire County and Franklin County because we are located in Hampshire County and many of our sending communities are in Franklin County as well. So this was shared at our last collaborative board meeting, and I thought you'd be interested in seeing how our employees and families spend it. So you can look where it says Hampshire County Districts. You can go over to Smith Oak, or the third from the left there, and everywhere there's an X is a program that our North Hampton families are served by. And if we wanted to look at our top sending communities like West Hampton or Hatfield, we could see those programs as well.
Excellent.
But I thought it was just impressive, the way that they serve communities in this region, and you know, the fact that Franklin County districts belong to the Collaborative as well. And one other item, and that is I wanted to let the board know that Dr. Lincoln Hoker and I will be meeting tomorrow to prepare a progress report and his evaluation, and I'll be presenting it at our next meeting.
Excellent, thank you for that. Mr. Quadro, any remarks?
Last Thursday, attended the FFA breakfast and award ceremony at the Framingham Sheridan, and Smith vocational students won a number of awards, and what I thought was one of the most impressive ones was, bear with me a second here. They state degrees. Smith vocational students had 17 out of the 30 FFA members statewide earned their state FFA degree. So over half of the students that won this award or obtained this award, over half of them were Smith vocational students. I thought that was rather impressive. And then on Friday, I had lunch with Lindsay Sabadosa, our representative, and brought her up to speed on what's going on with our horticulture project, and she offered some thoughts, which I've shared with the administration or with Superintendent Andy, and we hope to start moving forward on some of those suggestions, and partly due to our shortfall in our construction budget. And that's it for now, and I'll update us furthermore on where we're at with the building project later on in the meeting.
Very good, I appreciate it. Moving forward, may I have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 23, and April 4th, 23, Board of Trustees meeting?
It's all moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, would you like to turn over the Joe for at that first?
Yeah, good evening. The FFA advisors couldn't make it tonight, but they did prepare a PowerPoint that I'll efficiently go through.
Just click if you see one.
Oh, all right, perfect, thank you. So this is just a group shot from the FFA convention, that's the hotel that Mr. Quadro referenced. And as he referenced, these are the names of the students who received those 17 out of 30 state degrees. And here you can see students being presented. We have Rosemary Barnhart on the left and Katrina Chase on the right, Grace Clendenin on the left, Omri Siyafu, Ziufo, excuse me, on the right, Chris Corbett, Gianna Daniels, left and right, Ben Fields, Charles Flora, Paige Kroufa, Connor Lambert, Hannah Marcel, and Elizabeth Murdock, Lily Ripley, who was also our non-traditional student of the year for Mass CTE, and Jared Russo. And they are together. We also have students, there we go, gift of blue, which is that they have earned their own FFA jacket, students who don't have them. We have a number of jackets that they borrow, but these are students that have earned their own jackets so that they can be embroidered with their names. And you can see these students receiving them. On the bottom here, we have Cody Hodges, Evan Sampson, Nolan Finney, and Joe Bonanno. That's Joe Bonanno on the left, and Michael Theriot on the right. Michael's father is currently a custodian at our school, and on the Tuesday after break, he will start as the new carpentry instructor. Joe Bonanno again. Lily Ripley, I won't read these slides because they have them hard, but... So she will be going to the national level. This is a picture of Gianna. I don't believe they have a photo of Ben or Nellie. I actually met with, it was funny when I was getting ready to, I served as a judge for the AgroSciences Fair, which I've done a number of times. Dr. Lincoln Hoker has also done, and Ms. Sharier, but before she went on to do her speaking, she was in the hall, she was really nervous, and she ended up doing a great job.
Pretty happy here.
Yeah. In the science leadership event, so in the science fair, third place, Katrina Chase, Seraphina Gibson. Next, Quiz Bowl, which is where they answer, it's kind of like Jeopardy, a number of different questions and things. So they finish fourth in both divisions.
What is it, extemporaneous public speaking work? They give them a topic?
They give a topic and then they go.
Wow, sounds terrifying. And great preparation for life.
I think you do it every day.
I do, it's terrifying. Are these concentrations in horticulture, or no, they're just?
Floricultural, floriculture is a concentration. So you have greenhouse and floriculture, and there is landscaping, turf management. Not, some of them are concentrations and some of them are topics within, like turf management part. She didn't tell me what the demonstration was. I wish, I wish they had, but I can get that for you. And that's the president of the Grange, I believe, the State of Grange, who was actually here at the board meeting.
When they gave us the check.
When they gave the grant.
Nice. How many students went altogether from social education?
Fifty-three. So you can see they're national qualifiers.
When is the national competition?
In October. I don't know the exact dates.
And where will that be held?
It's normally held in Indianapolis.
And they'll go out there for them?
Yes.
Awesome.
So if it's in October, and there are seniors that are currently graduating, how's that usually?
So they go as post-grads. So we still, it's still, cost is covered by us, and they'll go out to compete.
And when that occurs, do they, are they generally able to show up, or their life has changed and they have?
I would say most of the time they show up. They're ready to go. It's something that, there's still, a lot of them are still involved in FFA either outside of here, 4-H, or they graduate. If they go to college, a lot of them are going to ag schools, so they're still doing FFA at the ethical legal level. As you can imagine, equine is becoming a big focus again.
In our, at our school?
Yeah, and in general, yes. After the, after COVID-19 pandemic, a lot of people seemed to return back to horse and equine studies and riding, so it's actually, actually an up and coming, yeah.
How many horses do we have here?
We currently have two. The whole, when we're done with all the other renovations and things that are going to be happening over the next two years would be to build a new four or five-stall barn and increase that. The debt is going to take more money and more planning and more time, but that's in the, in the fight we're playing. Courtesy Corps is an interesting one. So they guard doors, wash doors, open doors, few people, guests as they come in and out. So it's a way for students to really be extroverted and...
Correct their soft skills.
Do their little soft skills and... This is our current leadership team, our officers. It's Katrina Chase, Ally DeVino, Lily Ripley, Suzanne Beengueal, and Nellie Hampton. And the rest is just some nice, different shots of everybody.
Does animal science have non-traditional stu-, like, is either gender considered non-traditional in animal science?
So I believe it's male-dominated at the national level, but in Massachusetts, it's actually female-dominated.
And clearly here as well?
Yeah, here too, yeah.
Yeah, I noticed that there are way more young ladies at this event than young men.
Yes, Massachusetts is sort of huge.
Including the school and statewide.
And there I am, judging, didn't realize they got a...
You want to do credit?
I want proof I was there. Like sneak up behind me and take a photo.
Looks fancier than where it was last year.
It's a very nice place. A very nice place. I enjoy it. And they still did their dance.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
I'll highlight the horticultural building project. We had our first meeting with our O P M, which is owner's project manager, to help us navigate the rest of the project. And the first step would be getting out an R F Q, R F P, whatever you used to call it, request for qualification, request for proposal for design services. And we're going to get that ball rolling, and we're hoping, we're hoping, fingers crossed, I'm being optimistic, seems to be the, the O P M is painting a different timeline than what I hope we can accomplish, and I hope we can accomplish groundbreaking of April 2024, but that's, proof will be in the pudding and the process on how quickly we move forward and get a design team on board and get contract documents out to bid, and then under what format that project will move forward as. There's two main formats, which is design bid build, which is called Mass Chapter 149, and the other format is Chapter 149A, which is construction management at risk. And there's pros and cons in both, and we're going to start having those pros and cons out and decide which direction we'd like to move in. And from there, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith for the update on on-campus projects.
Yep, so our focus has been lately is to finish the renovation on the old rec building, so we plan on having the kids back in there as soon as break comes, is done.
Awesome.
And then in the meantime, during break, we'll take down the old pig barn and start renovating the MS classroom, take out the cabinets and get ready for the next, that next phase of the project. Also, we'll start, hopefully this summer, start the AC project and C building, and we got money this year to start the control work on that, so. The sidewalk project is still plodding along. Hopefully we can finally get the finished plans on it this week or early next week. They started working on the apple storage, putting up a false wall to support the backside so they can take out that column and replace it, and then start working on the floor structure. I think that's it.
I'd like to thank Mr. Smith for multitasking with different, I mean, if I turn a corner and it's a different project, Tim's standing there, and I want to thank you for your multitasking. You're doing rather well, thank you. Superintendent Smith? Oh, no, sorry.
The negotiations subcommittee met on March 28th. That meeting, we reviewed the pay scales for our non-represented support employees, and these are even more complicated than I thought, with every position essentially having a different pay scale, and these were inherited from previous administrations. We've heard Dr. Lincoln Hoker and Ms. Fairman refer to the additional steps that have been recently added to all pay scales for support employees, and I learned more about those. The cafeteria worker pay scales were the first to be looked at, and this was triggered by the increase to minimum wage in Massachusetts. Dr. Lincoln Hoker and Ms. Fairman wanted to ensure compliance with the new wage rate, and so they increased pay by adding steps. Those increases bumped cafeteria workers into the pay scale above them, so that was also raised by adding steps, and then the one above that, and so on, until all of the scales had steps added to them. The average step increase was a little over 3%, and this is in addition to the cost of living adjustments that are also given every year, usually about 2%. But it's important to remember that we were starting with wages that were below the minimum in our state. So our discussion then returned to the idea of increase, increasing longevity benefits for non-represented support employees, not at the Unit D and Unit H rate, but somewhat above the current rate, which is rather low. We appreciate the service of our long-term employees and recognize that there are many advantages for the school that come from a stable workforce. Our recommendation, which this board will vote on later tonight, is to increase the benefits to $500 for five to nine years of service, and $750 for 10 to 14 years, while keeping 15 to 19 years at $1,000, 20 to 24 years at $1,200, and over 25 years at $1,500 for fiscal year '24. You heard at our last meeting that Dr. Lincoln Hoker has included these increases in his budget proposal, and the total for the additional increase would be about $1,350.
So thank you for being here this evening. Going back to the traditional format, there are very few slides. There's been a lot that's been going on over the last couple of months, especially since I give in a report like this. So tonight, I just want to focus on a lot of just the recent happenings here on campus. There we go, I can barely read that. So way back in February, we had our February vacation. Came back, we had our monthly DESI CTE call. Again, this is put on by Liz Bennett, one of the associate commissioners, the Career Technical Education Office at DESI, and it seems like a lifetime ago, but we were also in the business of Unit H negotiations. We've been at a snow day. I was part of a MAVA officers and DESI update call, and we've been having a lot of those recently. Sort of came to a climax last week, got an E P A, which I'll talk about after we go to the meeting with the folks from DESI around hoisting license. I can give the board an update around that. And again, more Unit H negotiations. And then beginning part of March, we had our mindfulness session, wrapping up the mindfulness session, that was with Ted, who was a trainer at that point. And then we'll talk about the next phase that we've just entered over the last couple of weeks with Cindy Weeks Bradley. And again, that's all around our equity work with the leadership team. As Dr. Spencer Robinson mentioned, we had a negotiations subcommittee meeting back on March 7th. We then had another snow day in the middle of March. And then on March 16th was a full day down in Marlboro, where we had a MAVA officers meeting, we had a board of directors meeting, and then a general membership meeting. So it was a full day of collaboration and talking at the state level, what can we do to advocate for CTE across the state. So that was, again, another productive afternoon and evening. And then several of us on the 17th, we were able to support and stay in for the school at the St. Patrick's Day breakfast at the city, the Hotel North Hampton. And then Cindy Weeks Bradley, part of the equity work and part of that contract, she is providing me some professional coaching. So our first session was on March 20th, and it's basically 30 minutes to an hour, and basically the topic is of my choosing, and just talking about my professional growth as a superintendent, areas I want to improve on, areas I can try to open my eyes and see campus-wide, just to make myself more of a, my eyes a servant leader, but just more open to various things happening on campus, and what can I do to better support all staff and students. March 21st, we had obviously a property subcommittee meeting and board of trustees meeting. And then on Wednesday, the 22nd, we had the spring program advisory dinner and meetings that many of you were at. I think that was one of the best dinners that we've had, by far the biggest turnout when it came to advisory members. And if you talked to Chef Lacy, we were way over the anticipated plate count. So he somehow worked a miracle, he found some extra food, and we were able to make sure that all people at least were fed. And then they moved on to the meetings. Leadership team, board of trustees that were in attendance were able to walk around and check in. And again, I was blown away with the attendance at each of the advisories. It was great to see. Some years we had maybe two or three advisory members in particular shop. I can't think of a shop that had less than, you know, six or seven on the, on the small side. So a great turnout. We had a, the following day, busy day and evening for the custodians, they had to prepare for the program advisory, tear that down, and then set up for the following morning, we had the career fair in the gymnasium. And proud to say that we, in essence, sold out the career fair. We had to turn people away, which is a great sign. So I think the students had a great opportunity to interact with various employers, think some, talking about soft skills, just having those discussions with the adults. And I think that the employers also enjoyed themselves interacting with the students. So I think it's a great experience. I want to thank Ms. Sharier for overseeing that and planning it, working with Tax wider, and got it, and getting that program up and running, and it's only been increasing each year, and this was a highlight for the spring. And then the MAVA officers, we had another update meeting with DESI the following day. And then Joe and I went to the Delaney House, for the monthly luncheon. That particular topic was Bob Baldwin, who is the new executive director for the MIA/MSAA, they've dropped an S in the name. And Bob just gave all of us an update on what is happening at the state level when it comes to athletics, some of the organizational changes that have occurred, and some of the focus areas that he's been spearheading at the state level. So that was that particular topic. We had another negotiations subcommittee meeting on March 28th, and then I had a meeting with Liz, basically a 101 meeting on March 30th, to talk about the hoisting license. This is what I was alluding to with the board, that we had an update, I couldn't really share anything. So that news came out on March 30th, and I'll unveil it when we get to, towards the end of this particular slide. Seems to be middle ground, I'm not sure if we can really agree that is middle ground, but there is at least a decision at the state level that schools can begin to take some action on, at least in the interim. Then March 31st through April 2nd, that was basically a week and a half ago, several of us went down to Patriots Place for the annual Mass CTE conference, and I have a few pictures to share. It was a great night to showcase and celebrate the staff, but also a lot of award winners that came from Smith, Holly Boson and that. On March 4th, we had our first official session with Cindy Weeks Bradley, meeting with the leadership team. I think we had very positive feedback with her energy, with her insight, her ability to sort of read all of us as leaders, give us a feedback. I think that was a great first step. We unofficially met this morning, we didn't officially meet necessarily, but there was an assignment given to all of us that we're working on, just to kind of give us a direction, sort of a project to focus on, what can we do to, again, continue to expand this equity work school-wide as individual leaders. So that's the next phase that we're in. Also emerged, I'm sorry, April 4th, the health technology program, they had their annual CNA celebration, where they invite in the family members, and this is typically for the juniors who have finished the CNA curriculum before they sit for the exam. And we just celebrate all the hard work that they had, you know, over the previous two and a half, three years, as the future CNAs of the world. So it's a great opportunity to see the students celebrating their hard work. It's also really nice and touching to see the families celebrating the young ones and their hard work, so a special celebration. We then had, last week, a week ago tonight, we have the budget meeting that, again, thank you to the board for approving the budget, which one less worry to have this evening. We then had the FFA state convention, as Mr. Bianco mentioned, but before the actual convention, several of us were down there for the DESI update. And the agenda was to talk about the hoisting license, and then to begin to talk about the horticulture concentrations. Same conversation that we had with animal science a few years ago, perhaps this is the time to begin to break out the horticulture concentrations into individual standalone programs. We didn't get that far, because in essence, we spent a whole hour talking about the hoisting license. So at this moment in time, the middle ground is the state will allow students who are 16 years or older to go through the process to earn his or her apprentice hoisting license. So not the official, full-blown hoisting license, but there's an apprentice hoisting license. They will allow a 16-year-old to do that. First question that was solved... First question that was solved was a 16-year-old may not have a driver's license, so how does that individual sit for the exam if they require photo ID? So the state will allow a student ID to fill in for the driver's license. So a 16-year-old can sit for the exam. There's a cost for the exam. Another stipulation is that a student has to pass a DOT physical. And there's still some concerns around if you have to be 18 or not for that. It sounds like we're working through that process, but there's a cost for that DOT physical. There's a cost for the individual exam. And I'm trying to think what else. Those are the major pieces. Now, the state, in their infinite wisdom, they have granted permission for the schools to use their Perkins money to cover the cost of the DOT physicals and for the exams. I have to ask the question or point out a concern I have. Our Perkins, and I've shared this with the board, our Perkins here at Smith is only approximately, give or take, $100,000 a year. And I've mentioned, when I highlight the skills capital grants, you know, one CNC machine and the advanced manufacturing program is $250,000. So the $100,000 does not go very far, especially when we're trying to support 15 shops. We're trying to support teacher and administrative professional development and so much more. Okay? So then all of a sudden, if they say, but you can use Perkins for the covering of the cost, DOT physical and the exam, we're taking money away from something else. And in my eyes, this is a mandate that's coming from the state in order for our students to pass the competencies that are currently in the DESI-approved program. So students have to have access to this equipment. It's according to the frameworks. They have to have this license. In order to get that license, we have to pay for the testing exam. So it sounds to me it's an unfunded mandate, just another one down the pipeline. They acknowledge that, but it is what it is. We also share concerns around, is this the right thing to do or not? I share concern that we have parents, I've had parents reaching out to me, asking what they can do. I said, what would happen if some of those parents reached out to local media? And this becomes a bigger issue. We are talking about hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, taxpayer money that went to purchase a lot of new equipment for many schools and that equipment now is sitting still collecting dust. I'm sure people in the Commonwealth would not be very happy to hear that taxpayer money was spent on this equipment that we can't use now. And now the workaround is we have to spend more money in order for our students to gain access to it. The other question that we pushed back on was, again, back to the 16-year-old, when it comes to the curriculum and the teaching and learning, why couldn't we align this to a grade level? Why couldn't you say sophomores or juniors? Okay, we didn't really want juniors, but hypothetically sophomores. But we know some sophomores are 15 years old. Some sophomores might be 17. But to sort of pick and choose, okay, your sophomore year that you students can earn this exam, pass this exam and earn access to the equipment, but you sophomores cannot, we felt, and I want to thank Ms. Wanzek who pointed out some of the civil rights concerns that we have and also around the special ed requirements around modifying or accommodating for the test. Their answer is for our students to go to a test site, which also consists of adults who are out in industry sitting for that same exam. And talk about test anxiety for some of our students within IEP, they now have to sit in a large room with adults who might be a little rough around the edges, putting it nicely, and telling that student they have to pass this test. How will that go over? And when that student does not pass the exam, that means that student no longer has access to that equipment. Is that an issue when it comes to an IEP as far as access to a curriculum? So a lot of questions were raised, not a whole lot of answers were offered, and it took us an hour. So I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but the state felt there was some good news to share. I think there's just some very valid, valid concerns and questions that are still out there.
Can you name the shops where our students would be eligible for what hoisted licenses would be?
This would be for horticulture. Horticulture, Ag Nuck, and Animal Science, probably Harrison, that would be the three shops that would have access to the hoisting equipment.
And do we fit in that category of schools that will have equipment that our students will not be able to operate because they won't have a hoisting license?
We do right now.
We do right now.
Skills capital grants that we were able to get to help pay for some of the horticulture building. If you go down back right now, you see some beautiful new equipment our students can't touch right now.
So only the adults can use it?
Correct. Who have a hoisting license.
Right. And is your sense that there would be strong interest in students being able, from the students of being able to earn their hoisting license?
Yes. And there's a strong interest within the employers. And we made that known to DESI as well. We have employers who want to hire our students because our students have access to this equipment versus an adult who never had any hands-on operating experience who was able to sit for the test. And again, as reminded, the test is similar to what we pass for a driver's permit. The driver's permit test wasn't a safely operating test. It was, do you know the regulations and the rules of the road? That's the same test for this. It's, do you know the regulations and the laws around hoisting equipment? It's not necessarily testing if you know how to properly safely operate the equipment. And that's what we teach our students, so.
So the state awarded the capital skills grants and now the state is?
Same thing.
Right.
Yes. Two different agencies, but yes, technically the state is the state. I don't want to steal Mr. Bianco's thunder, but a program that he was able to, as the leader of the building, bring in was great and whip. He will share all of that last Friday. The only thing that he wasn't able to claim was for all the wins last Friday. Overall, it was a great experience watching the students do that. I mentioned, again, I had another session yesterday with Cindy Weeks Bradley, another coaching session. Again, a great time just talking to her and kind of having me look at things just a little bit differently, which is great. This morning, I already mentioned how we sort of had some work, you know, through Cindy. It wasn't a face-to-face or a sit-down, a more individual work that we began. And then obviously, as Mr. Riquadro already mentioned, we had our property subcommittee meeting earlier today. So difficult to see, but some photos from the Mass CTE awards. Far left is me presenting one of the awards. And then the other three photos were the three special awards that we here at Smith were able to receive and be recognized for. Sort of the joke at the conference was they're going to change the name to the Smith Vocational Awards. There weren't that many statewide awards given that night and we received three of them, which is outstanding. So as Mr. Bianco already mentioned, Lilly was the Non-Traditional Student of the Year. Again, statewide. So that's the second picture in from the left, that's Lilly. And then the next one over, it's all the staff, the teachers and administrators that were there. But there, we were recognizing Joe Brewer as the New Teacher of the Year. He's in the Criminal Justice Program. And then last thing on the far right, I thought this was beyond special, we were able to recognize both the police and fire departments here in North Hampton as the Friends of CTE and just all of their work and partnerships that they have. I sort of joked when I was making some remarks, but it's also serious. The trust that they put into our automotive program, that our students maintain their cruisers. The same cruisers that might be chasing those same teenagers down sometimes, so not go that sort of that cycle. And then all the things that the fire department does for us as well. Very special night. I want to thank Chief Casper, Assistant Fire Chief Heelus, Detective Victor Kudo, and I forget the gentleman, the mechanic?
Jeff.
Jeff, the mechanic for the fire department, who was also in attendance that evening. I think they were blown away. As I've been blown away, working within the vocational community, they were blown away with sort of the tight-knit community that we have statewide when it comes to CTE, how everybody's down-to-earth and student-centered. And that was the biggest state-wide. I just appreciate the fact that they were there to go on to them. So a great conference, a week and a half ago. We're going to talk about the Horticulture Building in a little while, talking about the official building committee that I would like to put forward in front of the board. Mr. Riquadro already mentioned, the OPM was finalized, like he was in attendance earlier tonight, which was great. So my recommendation for the official building committee, right now we have a meeting as a property subcommittee since the fire. And the property subcommittee is an official subcommittee for the full board. But now we're at a phase where now that we actually have the OPM on board and we have to go out to bid for the design architect, most large-scale building projects, if I see this, if you walk into a school and you look on a plaque inside the door, there's a building committee. Now, building committee has more operational oversight of that whole process. So I recommend that we sort of shift away from a property subcommittee and we authorize the makeup of an official building committee. We can meet as often as necessary. We have a lot of information and a lot of authorization over some, just a lot of decisions that have to be made. I mentioned it earlier today, any official contract decisions and votes, monetary votes, would still come in front of the entire board, so we'd not be excluding that from the full board, but just a lot of the minutia that has to be discussed and answered, I would prefer that we have that in front of the official building committee. Doing some research, what a building committee is typically comprised of and knowing who we are as an entity, I just threw up some ideas. And I know talking to Mr. Riquadro and talking to the property subcommittee earlier today, we have some more ideas, but at least one trustee should sit on that. I would have my preference, obviously, and Mr. Riquadro, just with his background in construction, I think it makes a lot of sense. And if we had another trustee, I'd leave that to the board. I think myself as a superintendent, I think Ms. Fairman as the business administrator, Mr. Bianca as the overseer of the programs on campus as the principal, I think Ms. Sharrier as the CTE director, since this particular building is going to be servicing one of the programs. I think one or both of our horticulture instructors who have been diligent, they've been coming to every single property subcommittee, I think they need to be at the table as well since they're the ones living in that particular building, I think they should be invited. The OPM should be on that. He already knows that. He's accepted that offer. And then I put out there industry experts with a big question mark. So this is very common in building committees, that you may want to have somebody with a background in mechanicals. You may want to have somebody with a background in electrical and plumbing, and maybe there's some other trades. Where those individuals would not be going out to bid to get the subcontract, they would not be working at the building. They'd be as an advisory on this particular committee, making sure that we're not forgetting anything or missing anything. So who those individuals are, I would leave up to the board. Some, I know Mr. Riquadro had some recommendations. Another recommendation that came up today is that perhaps we talk to some of those programs that we have on campus and maybe they have advisory members who aren't necessarily interested in going for the job, but they already have ties to the school, they're already invested in the school, maybe they want to step up and sit on the building committee as well. So I share that. I know there's a motion, there's a motion later in the meeting, we can talk about it more, but I really do think it's a viable next step to make things as efficient as possible and make sure that we're not forgetting anything as we get into the weeds. So there's that piece. Next up, as I already mentioned, we have to go out to bid as soon as possible for the design phase. That's that architecture firm who will be truly giving us those design documents so that we can begin to build. And we keep talking about it, how do we, you know, how do we and when do we finalize the official budget? In the past, I've been showing the updated revenue sources that we have, which is north of $6 million. The latest estimate that we had gotten from DEETs when we were wrapping up the feasibility study was approximately $7.4 million. And how do we deal with that gap? So those are the discussions that the full board, we're going to have to agree upon at some point. So those are the updates for the rebuild. And I want to thank Ms. Wemeth for this. So I typically don't provide a whole lot of background when a donation comes through, but I do want to thank Ms. Wemeth. I haven't had the opportunity to meet Ryan, but, so Ryan Sanger donated $3,000 to cosmetology. And you may say, okay, well, thank you, let's move on. I just want to take a moment and I'm going to try to read a write-up that Ryan provided us to give you an idea of who he is and why this is important. So if you can sort of step back and just think about all the enrollment data I've shared with you over the past couple of months with the population that we serve and the high need students and so on and so forth. And take that mindset, okay, of who we serve and listen to who Ryan was and who Ryan is now. And he thanks this school, which is why he came back and donated $3,000 to the school. So this is from Ryan. This is not me. These are his words. So he graduated in 2013, so again, 10 years ago. So how old are you now? So 10 years after high school. So again, put yourself in his shoes, 10 years post-high school, where were you in your life? He received his cosmetology license at 17 years old. I went directly to Boston and apprenticed at Mitchell John Salon under the co-creator of Living Proof, making $8 an hour, that's minimum wage at the time, plus tips. Later moved salons and was a busy commission stylist doing color, cutting and styling, as well as being the director of education at the salon at 10 Newbury Street in Boston. He worked in Boston for three years. In 2016, I decided to move to LA. Not knowing anyone there, I rebuilt my clients in seven months and worked in Beverly Hills as a salon commission colorist. I worked at Beaumains Salon for two years and then Salon Camouzzie for two years. I was specializing in hair color and hair lingerie, hair extension services, making over $100,000 a year at that time. I then decided to open up my own studio salon exclusively specializing in hair lingerie, luxury hair extensions, because the feeling of euphoria and confidence it gives clients was unmatched to any other beauty service I had performed. Hair lingerie extensions are also the highest payout per hour service and is the service I get the most enjoyment performing. I opened my studio salon in 2021 at 26 years old. Working behind a chair three or four days a week, I personally grossed $312,000 the first year open. And remember, I have zero, capital letters, zero student loans because I was going to Smith Vocational Cosmetology. So from $8 an hour to $312,000 in a matter of a few years. So thank you to Ryan, thank you to Ms. Wemeth. And again, that's just another example of what happens with our students who come here. They have a mission, they have a vision, they have a plan, they have a goal, and then they achieve it. So thank you to Ryan.
Also, a product of the North Hampton Public Schools, went to JFK, one of the nicest people you will ever meet.
Oh, you know him?
Yeah. Yeah. And my daughter was, wanted to be his hair model at Skills.
Oh, that's right.
Massachusetts. So I don't know, I think she might have.
Forgot that.
And now we've learned what hair lingerie is.
Yeah, right.
Hair lingerie is just a brand. That's the brand.
That's what we just found.
Oh, okay. Just figured that one out.
You Googled it.
No, they're just, as in anything, there's degree of quality. And so he is definitely dealing with high quality. And the night, the other nice thing that he didn't mention is anytime he's in this area, he always comes in and talks to the students because he does, he does do some pretty famous people's hair. And he shares that with them, like, I was here, you can be where I am now if you want to be.
Super talented.
That's great. So looking ahead, between now and the next board meeting, I believe, we have a city department head meeting this week.
Oh, yes. Oh, wow. Thanks for mentioning me.
You're welcome. That same day, so this Thursday, Thursday evening, has been on the agenda the past couple of months, is the Mava Outstanding Student of the Year program. And that will be in Worcester. And our very own Manny Wright, who sits on the board, she will be the student who will be recognized that evening from Smith Vocational. Next week, we have no school, that's our April vacation. So congratulations to the students and staff that have so much needed downtime. We come back from vacation on Monday, the 24th. I'll be joining the officers down at Assadet, where we're going to meet the new Secretary of Education, Tuttweiler, and just talk about vocational ed, so to understand what his vision is and take a tour of Assadet. He was the former superintendent in Lynn, I believe it was. He is very knowledgeable of vocational ed, so it shouldn't be anything too new to him. It would be nice to make that connection and get to know him a little bit more. The next day on a Tuesday, we'll have our continued work with Cindy Weeks Bradley around the equity work. On that Friday, the 28th, is Mass Skills USA down at Blackstone. I'll be down there, walking around seeing the students competing at the state level. I also have a Mava Board of Directors meeting after seeing you during the day. On May 3rd, the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce, the new executive director reached out to me a few days ago. She and the mayor, they're organizing this economic development all-day workshop and they asked if I'd be there to just participate as the superintendent. So we'll see how that day goes. I will report back on how that day goes.
Who invited you?
The new executive director of the East Hampton Chamber of Commerce and the East Hampton Mayor.
Do they know, do they know that East Hampton students don't come to?
That's why I said yes as quick as I could.
Redlining, so you can't go to work there.
And they know that there are parents who would like their kids to come here?
I'm assuming employers have spoken.
Okay. Oh, so this is a good sign?
I think this is an excellent sign.
Oh, wow. Okay.
I don't think I'm walking into a horninessness. I think I'm walking into a positive discussion.
That would be so exciting.
So we'll see. As reminded to the board, you have your MIA C Day on the Hill event. I think at least some of you plan on attending that day. That Friday is then the monthly luncheon at the Delaney House for the Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable. We have another Cindy Weeks Bradley coaching, I have another coaching session with Cindy that following week, more equity work with Cindy. And then on that same day, the NAAC Steering Committee has a several-hour workshop set aside to continue to work on our prep work for next year's visit. On the 10th, I have a planned MAVA officers meeting. On that Friday is the prom, if you can believe, we're already talking about prom season, that's Friday, the 12th, that's at the Law Cabin. We received an email today from the senior class advisors, prom tickets were sold out. So this happened to us last year, happened to us this year. So I think the combination of increased enrollment and I think just a renewed interest in student activities and getting involved and having those experiences has led us to selling out the prom tickets, which is, I guess, a good problem to have. More equity work with Cindy. And then obviously, that same evening, on the 16th, will be the next board meeting. And like I said, next May, I think the plan at that point would be to begin to plan and preview the end of the year. Before you know it, we'll be talking about graduation and everything else and wrapping up in June. So with that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thank you.
Mandy couldn't be with us tonight, but she did prepare a report and senior packet just to hit some key things in my report. We have our enrollment admissions, we hit 320 applications through this time, 18.75% from North Hampton. All the applications, except for maybe just a tiny handful that are, we're still trying to get documents for, so that they're complete packets, have been graded and ranked. Letters are going to get sent out this Friday, they're going to get packaged up on Thursday, notifying students, so there'll be students that get the 150 for registration, the rest will be on waitlist. They'll have till approximately, I think it's May 19th, to solidify that seat. And then our school counselors will work phones, find out who in fact doesn't want to come, calculate how many seats are remaining, and then send out a second round with a deadline, and then we'll go from there. One of the things we're doing differently this year, though, in the past, we've been releasing that through email, and we want to go back to giving the kids something in our hands. So our graphics department created Smith Voke envelopes for us to be able to put official letters in. And then they're also going to get a bumper sticker for the car that says SBHS 2027 to go in there with that stuff, just to try to kind of take that up a notch. I think it, we just feel going back to what is in your hands is a little more exciting and opening it up, so we're going to go back to that.
Excuse me, Mr. Biaka. Might have missed something. So this admissions, that'd be April 2023.
Yeah, that's just a typo.
And so we have 18.75% from North Hampton. What about a percentage from the other sending communities? I understand there's, what, 64 sending communities? Is that number correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there another municipality that sends? What are some of the percentages?
Sure, sure. I don't have the exact percentages, but we're pretty, we are pretty consistent that North Hampton and Hampshire Regional are usually neck and neck as our 1 and 2 sending districts. So and there's five towns in the Hampshire Regional School District. After that, we would move into Gateways, Hampton, and Amherst, and then we would start going into probably groups of six to 12 students per area, all the way down to where they might just be sending one. But those are our predominant districts, would be that, including Central Berkshire would be in that top, that top group, too, so.
So it's North Hampton and you send to Hampshire Regional.
Yeah, North Hampton, Hampshire Regional, and then we generally move down into Gateway, East Hampton, Amherst, Central Berkshire.
Okay, thanks.
But for the next meeting, I can let you know where the...
Yeah, no, I was just curious.
Where the rap was this time around. As Dr. Lincoln over stayed, we did have to grit and wit. What that is, is that's a, it's an obstacle course of mental challenges, so the students go through different obstacles. They'll do a physical challenge, followed by a puzzle challenge or a thinking challenge, either math or some other pattern. They have to go through this as teams, and then they move back on, and they're timed. And students have the ability afterwards, after the first run or so, you can reshuffle into new teams, you can go through with your existing team. So we did run that. That would fit into our school improvement plan, underschool culture, as we're trying to do team building and other positive activities for students that builds confidence.
Was it the whole school?
It was 10th and 12th grade students, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to create a, hopefully, what is a consistent recurring event that happens in each grade. So ninth grade, we have the, obviously, we have the student orientation, and then we have our own student team building that we do within that first week, second week of school with all ninth grade students. And then they also have Geez Wilds, who comes and he talks about bucket lists and setting your goals. It's really good for ninth grade. This would be one of those things in 10th grade. Currently, we don't grab anything for 11th grade, and then they would do this again in senior year, so each student would run through it twice. They have a bunch of different activities, so they're not going to necessarily see the same obstacles and puzzles, you know, both years. So they do keep that map, and they told me they'll do another. Since the first year that we did that.
That's a program that's out there, it's not something that you invented yourself?
Yeah, it's a company, yes. Personnel update, just to let you know that we did hire an adult ed coordinator, which is an assistant for Lorena, her name is Sarah DiMaria. Ag mechanics, unfortunately, we did have to repost. It's definitely a tough, tough job. I think we're pulling a lot of people out of industry that are, may or may not be ready to teach, it may not actually be their calling, but they want to give it a shot, and I commend them for that. But we did have to repost. So we did post for an assistant principal, which was approved in the budget, and health technology instructor, Sharon Summers, is retiring, so we will be reposted to replace her. And for graduation prep, and we're starting to get there, little less prep, well, I shouldn't say less, different prep, because we are going to be doing it on our football field now. So we did make the move to say that that's going to be our preferred spot from now on. So information for seniors salutes, that's where we highlight each grad and send that out on social media. The students, the seniors will be getting at the end of this week. Alicia Carter, I want to thank her, she's been the one that I've been working on behind the scenes each year, and she's agreed to do it again. And they'll start going out on May 1st. After that information specifically around the final senior event week, that'll go out for the first week of May of families. So pending your questions, that's my report.
Potential for unfavorable weather at graduation. We lucked out last year.
We did.
Remember, we got it in right before the storm, if I'm correct?
Yeah.
So.
We plan on doing the same thing. Right before the storm.
What's the graduation date?
It is June 1st. We did purchase two tents, so we have our own tents now, large tents for guests and students, but we will have a rain date the Friday.
So there is a scheduled rain date?
It's just not on the calendar.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Should I, Joe?
And that's at 6 o'clock, I'm guessing?
6 o'clock.
Tim did facilities report, we're all set there, Crystal?
Yeah, we're pretty much set there.
The budget documents were sent to the finance director last week. Those are due by April 15th, according to his city charter. As of April 14th, Friday, at the end of the school day, munis are coming off, they'll be shut down, and they will be advancing us into a new platform, which will be available to the city and our business staff on. This advancement is a very large advancement for us. It's totally different than what we've been using, so hopefully all goes smoothly and we'll be ready for the 19th. The trustee scholarship, we're selected with Mr. Cuadrado and Deb and Harper, but those will be submitted to guidance. It's the annual enrollment for health indentment for all employees. That goes from April 5th through May 3rd. Any changes or anything needs to be submitted by that date. Also, the GIC has set up a new portal for all employees, that which is paid. The new board report, there needs to be a few tweaks, and I've been working with the vendor to set up another meeting, so we can go through that, just to roll that back out. Also, I was notified last week that the FY24 city capital projects were awarded. That's the Building C Energy Management System and the Culinary, excuse me, and Cafeteria Hood System Replacement. The third and Special Ed invoices, third tuition and Special Ed invoices were mailed out on April 5th. I'm happy to report that we are under $100,000 for previous tuition. That's, oh, and that's remarkable for us right now. So I think, I think with the business support person, Heidi, she's been working diligently with reaching out to the districts to make sure that they pay the reimburse, and if they have any questions, or if they need additional copies.
Thank you. Under new business, we have a motion, the second, to approve payment on FY24 invoice to NAPA for $24.13, and that's from a motion rebalancing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It's just funded to see $24.13.
We have a motion, the second, to approve recommendation from the negotiation subcommittee to adjust the longevity for all non-represented support employees to five years, $500, 10 to 14, $750, keeping 15 to 19 years at $1,000, 20 years at $400, over 20, five years, $1,500 for the next fiscal year, FY24.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I see him. Hi.
We have a motion, second, to approve the surplus for resale from advanced manufacturing by Dwell Horizontal Bensam 6916S.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Looking at that sheet in regards to this, this piece of equipment could possibly garner a thousand-plus dollars.
What's that?
I don't have that sheet with me. The backup sheet that goes with dispersing surplus equipment, is that realistic, possibly? Yeah, $1,000, that's the name of it. And something like this, a lot of these things we seem to get rid of are really not of much use to people, but this piece of equipment does seem like it's some use.
Right, so with advanced manufacturing, it's sort of this double-edged sword in that particular program. So as we are awarded skills capital grants for that particular program, we have two issues, a space issue and electrical support issue. So in essence, anytime we want to upgrade a piece of equipment in advanced manufacturing, we add something, we have to get rid of something. So this is the one piece that we felt was the easiest to get rid of as we continue to improve. So when Matt, who's the department head, as he's looking at the equipment and looking at the cost, oftentimes, we don't have enough money in the skills capital grant with a revenue source, but we can sort of fill in that gap by whatever he's selling, so.
No, I'm not finding fault with this, I'm just saying that this is some real value to this piece of equipment.
You can see something from that shop that's typically valuable.
Right.
And Tim has a resource in regards to some of this heavy-duty equipment, where he stays right down to get the value. So I will say over the years, I've kind of followed that through and made sure we weren't giving those stuff away.
Great.
Next item, we have a motion, the second, to approve, to establish a building committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question for Dr. Lincoln Hooper or Mr. Cuadrado. I appreciated all of the, your thinking that was going into who would be on the committee, and wondering if you considered having a parent representative on the committee, something to throw out there.
Which is, when I was looking at other building committees, that is a common stakeholder, so I would be open to that as well.
Awesome.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Okay, future business, May 16th, we're going to have a JOS meeting at 5:00 here in the library. We already talked about this, April 13th, Outstanding Vocational Student Awards banquet at Danix Hall in Worcester. At this time, the chair moves to go into executive session, to enter into executive session on the Massachusetts General Law Open Meeting Law 30A, Section 21A, two, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the special education director, and to reconvene an open session for possible action. All in session.
Second.
Roquell Hill?
Mr. Kaling?
Present. Yes.
Dr. Spencer Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Cuadrado?
Yes.
Mayor Ciara?
Yes.
Dr. Pearson Campbell?
Yes.
We are live.
Live. Live. We have a motion, the second, to approve a contract for the special education director.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion, the second, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Good.